Well, good morning, everyone. No, good afternoon. Forgive me rushing in here. Welcome to Ranch Mirage and the City Council representing the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Development Successor Agency, our regular meeting Thursday, May 19, 2022. It is five after one, and I am bringing this to a decision that we are going to go forward. So with that, we're going to have roll call. Chrissy?
Councilmember Downs?
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Councilmember Wile?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kite?
Here.
Mayor Townsend?
Here. And with that, we will have the flag salute. And Ms. Iris Smotrich, would you do me the honor?
Absolutely. Please join me as we salute our glorious flag.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There you go. Thank you, Iris. All right. Moving forward, we have, under presentations, we have the Coachella Valley Municipal Species Habitat Conservation Plan Annual Report. Mayor Protem Richard Kite requested that the 2021 annual report for the Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan be presented to our city council. Richard is our city representative on the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission and served for 10 years as the chairman. Today, we have Peter Satin, Regional Planner from SEVAG, to give us the current status of the plan.
Good afternoon, council members and Honorable Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem Kite, for inviting me to speak today. I have a presentation as well. There we go. Thank you. So yes, as the mayor mentioned, my name is Peter Satin. I'm a Regional Planner for Coachella Valley Association of Governments, and I will be presenting the Coachella Valley Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, big mouthful, 2021 Annual Report. So before I get to the, all the statistics and the fund acquisitions, I want to just provide a little bit of background for those of you who may not be as steeped in the plan as perhaps Mayor Protem Kite is. So the Coachella Valley Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan is a joint habitat conservation plan and natural community conservation plan authorized by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and California Department of Fish and Wildlife, respectively. It provides programmatic state and federal incidental take for development projects in the Coachella Valley, and this programmatic take is why individual projects within perhaps the city of Ranch Mirage don't need to apply for independent or individual take permits from either of these wildlife agencies. So it kind of streamlines development in that fashion and really provides a leg up for some of these projects to get going, get off the ground more quickly. The permits were issued in 2008 and will last for 75 years. The acquisition plan under the plan is expected to take about 30 years, and then the remaining 45 will be spent kind of accruing funding to manage, maintain, and operate those conservation properties. So let's talk a little bit about the plan by the numbers. It covers 1.1, excuse me, 1.1 million square acres, which is about 1,800 square miles, sorry, yeah, 1,800 square miles. And it ranges from Banning Pass in the west all the way east to Chirico Summit. And the plan was designed to kind of encompass all of the watersheds that drain into the Coachella Valley and the Salton Sea. So the plan has 20 state, regional, and local permities, including all of the cities here in the valley and the county as well, including a few of the county departments like flood control, county parks, et cetera. Some of the state agencies include Caltrans Department, sorry, California State Parks and the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, and of course, the water districts as well. Those of you familiar with SEVAG will notice that CBCC does not, Blythe is not a member of CBCC, nor are any of our local Indian, sorry, Native American tribes. Some of them, in fact, actually have their own multiple species plans that they operate as well, and we work in conjunction with them to make sure that we're, you know, going after the same goals. So the plan covers 27 plant and animal species, 27 natural communities, and these are essentially just habitat types defined by various covers of vegetation, three essential ecological processes like wildlife corridors and sand transport. And this is all divided among 21 priority conservation areas, shown here. So these conservation areas are spread along the valley floor and up into the foothills of the surrounding mountain ranges, and they protect things like sand dunes and mesquite hummocks in Thousand Palms, freshwater marshes in the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel and Delta, Coachella Valley round-tailed ground squirrel, flat-tailed horned lizard, giant sand shredder, Coachella Valley giant sand shredder cricket, desert pupfish, Coachella Valley milkveach, and wildlife crossings here depicted by an underpass running underneath I-10 right by the Hogg and Lehman exit as you're heading west. You'll note that I didn't include some of the more charismatic species like the fringe-toed lizard here, the peninsular bighorn sheep. I kind of wanted to show the variety of animals that we're covering here and some that, you know, people aren't as familiar with. And I also want to note, too, the number of species that we're protecting that have the word or phrase Coachella Valley in their name. This kind of speaks to the high level of endemicity that we have here in the valley and the importance of protecting all of these species because they occur literally nowhere else. Okay, so how did we do in 2021? As I introduce the acquisition progress, I want to talk a little bit about how the plan tracks progress for conservation. Essentially, we allocate acquisitions of conservation acreage to one of three categories depending on how it's, how the acquisition is funded. So the first category is state and federal, and the plan lays out about 40,000 acres of state and federal land to be conserved. Local permitee, which are our local cities and the county, including Ranch Mirage, the plan has about 100,000 acres projected acquisition under this category. And finally, complimentary conservation. This is the conservation that nonprofits and other partner groups are conducting, especially in areas like the National Monument or the National Park that may already be conserved but are still, conservation in those areas still adds to the benefit of the plan. So all told, the plan is expected to preserve about 210,000 acres. And to reach that goal in 2021, we conserved about just over 2,000 acres, and CBCC, on behalf of our local permities, was responsible for 780 acres worth of that. Those 780 acres came at a cost of about $2 million, including one 250-acre parcel valued at $755,000 that was actually donated to us, so good savings there. So in 2021, we, of those 2,300 acres, we are now at a state and federal level of, sorry, just over 24,000 acres preserved for local permitee acreage preserve, we're at just over 14,000 acres. And I want to pause here and just note that CBCC is prioritizing the acquisition of at-risk parcels, so those parcels tend to be close to developing areas and are oftentimes smaller and more expensive because of the development potential. However, these still have very valuable conservation resources on them, so that's what we're going after first. And so that's why this number is a little low right now, but as the plan moves forward, as we either acquire those smaller properties for conservation or those properties are developed, we expect to be able to operate further field by, and start purchasing larger parcels for, at a lower cost per acre. So this is probably going to kind of creep up until all of a sudden it jumps up very quickly. And finally, complimentary conservation, I think, is around 60,000 acres all told. So if you're following along and doing some back-of-the-envelope math with me, you'll note that we have officially surpassed 100,000 acres, which is a huge milestone for any sort of conservation plan, especially one that's only been in effect for essentially, what do we, 14 years? So this is really exciting. We've, as of 2021, we have conserved 10346 acres, which is about 48% of the total goal that we've set aside for ourselves to conserve. And we couldn't have done that with all the support from our local permities, including Ranch Mirage and all the support that you've been, you know, implementing the plan, so we're very thankful for that. So where are some of these properties? One of the more exciting properties we acquired in 2021 is this 250-acre property in the Whitewater Floodplain, kind of heading out west right before you get to Banning Pass. This property was really exciting. As CBCC staff was out there inspecting it, we observed, you know, dozens of burrowing owls flitting in and out of all these burrows you can kind of see here on that left-hand-side picture. So it was a very active parcel in terms of wildlife resources and whatnot, and it's always exciting to see these critters that, you know, were working to preserve, actually occupying the territory that we're preserving for them. So that was great. Another kind of interesting note about this parcel is that it was formerly a very popular dump site. When we got out there, there were about 20 tons' worth of wood debris, carpeting, old tires, just, you know, whatever people wanted to kind of dispose of without telling anybody about. So we caused to be removed, all of this debris, and you'll see here, now we're kind of looking at that same location but from the opposite side of the road, so where these arrows are. We moved all of those wood piles, got them out of there, and now we've cleared that space to hopefully revegetate, you know, at the speed of the desert, of course, but nonetheless, it's now viable, viable habitat potentially again. Another exciting property that we acquired is the Rimrock Property, which is 42 acres in the Santa Rosa and San Jacinto Mountains Conservation Area. This property serves as the trailhead for the goat trails hiking spot, which is a very popular local hiking spot up in the hills there. So we're really excited to start utilizing this property and figuring out how we can create, you know, an accessible trailhead to give people information as they're going up into that area, as well as also start conserving the bighorn sheep habitat up here and kind of keeping people on designated trails and, you know, starting to limit some of the social trail proliferation. In addition to all the conservation that we're doing, we're also authorizing impacts to some of these conservation areas. This is the part of the job where we're allowing certain projects to move forward in these conservation areas with just a little bit of added oversight, not too much, though. So in 2021, we authorized one development project in the Thousand Palms Conservation Area, and we also logged an additional 20.5 acres of disturbance from previously authorized development projects. Okay, so in addition to all the acquisition, once we own those lands, we do have a responsibility to monitor, manage, and maintain those lands, and so we're always busy year-round getting out in the properties and doing all sorts of fun, exciting things. So 2021 was no different. We continued doing our aeolian sand species monitoring with our partners at University of California Riverside. This involves things like checking in on fringe-toed lizard and flat-tailed horned lizard habitat, conducting triple-ribbed, triple-ribbed milkveach, Coachella Valley milkveach, and little San Bernardino lananthus surveys. And so you can see the bottom right there is the Coachella Valley milkveach in bloom. And our partners at the San Diego Natural History Museum also resurveyed pomoises for yellowbat occupancy. We've continued doing honey mesquite monitoring and, in fact, installed a weather station here pictured on the left in the Willow Hole Conservation Area. This is going to help us track real-time precipitation data and other environmental variables that will kind of help us assess restoration possibilities and just conduct just general research and modeling. So again, our partners at UCR conducted surveys for cylindrical choya recruitment. That's that in the middle, and recruitment kind of just means, you know, are they growing? Are they adding to their population? And with the intention of better understanding the effects on the Kants Thrasher habitat, which is one of our protected species. And this study is actually going to plug in nicely to a climate resilience, resiliency grant we were just awarded from CDFW that's going to take place over the course of 2022 through 2024. And finally, we've got ongoing monitoring and monitoring of desert tortoise with our partners from the United States Geological Survey. That's there in the upper left, sorry, upper right, excuse me. We've also continued doing extensive land management, including things like sign installation here on the left, putting in signs alerting the public to authorized use of our properties and, of course, our property boundaries as well, including some fencing, some gates. And all this has actually been greatly aided by the implementation of our new cloud-based data collection system, which here pictured in the middle, so we can actually go out there with our cell phones, take a point where we are if something needs to be fixed or remedied, or we see something interesting that we want to note for later. And in fact, because of this service, we've actually been able to clean up our properties even faster. So for example, we found this pile of tires down in one of our properties, we were able to go out there, take a point, send it to the cloud, and, you know, send that to a contractor. Two days later, those tires were gone, so it was this really, really convenient way to kind of speed up and make more efficient the management process. We're also continuing to, or starting a new partnership with the Coachella Valley Desert Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority to, again, continue improving our trailhead signage. So here on the upper left is the new trailhead sign at the Long Canyon Trailhead in Desert Hot Springs that connects Desert Hot Springs to Yucca Valley in the High Desert through Joshua Tree National Park. It's a wonderful trail. If you have the opportunity to hike it, I highly recommend it. And as always, we are continuing our fight against invasive species, most notably removing tons and tons of tamarisk from both the Willow Hole Conservation Area and the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel and Delta Conservation Area. We've partnered with the Urban Conservation Corps to remove over eight acres of tamarisk from our North Shore Rance Restoration Site down near the Salton Sea, pictured there. And in addition to removing tamarisk from that site, we've also completed a draft restoration plan to improve rail habitat. That was finished in July and was funded in part by Proposition 1 monies from the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy. We've also held number, a number of volunteer weed-pulling days to remove invasive fountain grass and stinknet. Stinknet especially is becoming an increasingly problematic weed. We're finding it all over the place. We're not really sure where it's coming from or how to stop it at this point, so we're trying to nip it in the bud, no pun intended, and get that out wherever we find it. And we are planning some mesquite restoration projects in partnership with the Mission Springs Water District in Willow Hole for the year 2022. And I don't have any pictures here of it, but we were able to talk about it during the original presentation of this, during the director's announcements. We had cleared a bunch of tamarisk from the Willow Hole, as I mentioned, and we went back a few months later and observed that this, the massive uptick in willow, desert willow and riparian vegetation that sprouted in the area. So it's kind of just very heartening to see, you know, you go and you do all this tamarisk removal, you do all this invasive species work, and you do start seeing these desert natives come back, and it's going to provide phenomenal habitat. It's absolutely stunning out there. It almost looks like, you know, a jungle in the middle of our desert. So yeah, so I'd happily feel any questions from the council at this point, and again, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem for inviting me to speak today, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Peter, for being with us. I do have a question.
Absolutely.
The property that is obtained, is it state-owned, private-owned, or city-owned? Or how do you acquire it?
So through a number of fashions. As I mentioned, CBCC works on behalf of all the local cities, but we will take fee titled properties, so it will be vested in CBCC's name. But in certain cases, if our partners purchase it, then it's vested in their name, but we do conduct, you know, occasional transfers. So for example, if our partners at, say, Friends of Desert Mountains happens to purchase a property in a conservation area, they're able to transfer title to us so that we'll take ownership of that and it will show up as our property.
Very good. And how are the sheep doing?
Sheep are doing.
What about the sheep?
The sheep are doing well. Their population is continuing to improve slowly but surely. We had a very good update at the last meeting about all the collaring efforts and monitoring efforts that CDFW is conducting. And, you know, we've still got a study going kind of to assess the effect of recreational use and trail use on the sheep, but that's still pending, and we're waiting, eagerly awaiting results on that. But no, the sheep are happy and healthy, and we hope to see more of them soon.
Very good. Richard, I'll turn it to you.
Well, thank you. Great presentation of the Multiple Species Plan, originated in some years ago, as you mentioned, but it was set up for two goals, one to protect the 27 endangered species that are out there. You may not see them, but they're there. And then also to provide some direction to developers as they develop the, what's left of the desert land. So really very important for the Endangered Species Plan to work with all the cities and other agencies to make sure that the future is protected for all of us and our children and our children's children. Good job.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, Peter?
Yeah, Peter, thanks for being here. I'm on the, the board of the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy. Actually, I've been chairman of that board, and we work obviously closely together on a number of issues, and it's critically important that we maintain. I've always talked about maintaining the view corridors, which is so critically important to the valley residents here, and so we always look for acquisitions as you do. And I think both, both entities provide a great service for our, for our valley. So thanks very much for being here today.
My pleasure.
Very good. Any other comments?
I just have one question, Peter. Again, thanks for being here. I know you mentioned a few minutes ago about roughly the acreage that was acquired over the last year or so, but just give us a rough estimate as to over the last couple of years and for the next couple of years to come, roughly how much acreage do you hope to acquire and conserve?
Well, so how much we hope to acquire? We have an obligation to reach 210,000 acres all told. For the local permities, we need to hit about, what'd I say, 100,000 acres more or less, and we have another 20 or so years to do that. Trends have indicated that usually we're acquiring about 2,000 acres a year, give or take, because we can only purchase from willing sellers. We don't have any sort of ability to, you know, make people give us our land. But every once in a while, we're going to have a, we, you know, land a whale, as it were, including the recent Palm Hills acquisition, which is north of 3,000 acres, so that in addition to our standard acquisition, you know, work, probably, you know, put us, you know, pretty, pretty high in 2022. But generally, we are, you know, as long as we are, as long as we have the available funding to continue purchasing land, as long as people are willing to sell land to us, we're going to, you know, keep at it. So like I said, I think we have until 2035 to complete our acquisition goals, and we're averaging about 2,000 acres a year.
Thank you, Peter.
We almost acquire land at every meeting that the, that the commission has, so it's building up a fairly good backlog of properties.
Yeah, and as, like I said, I mentioned, too, we're focusing on the really at-risk properties right now, and, you know, we've, those are getting harder and harder to come by, and then as soon as we start moving out into perhaps like the Orocopia Mountains out east and places like that, we expect probably a little bit speedier acquisition process.
Very good. Peter, watching Nova last night, and they're, they're looking at the agriculturals and the fossil things that they go through from the different universities all over. Do we have any, are we just, you know, nowhere near anything like that that's out in that desert where people would come and look for fossils, you know?
That's a good question. I haven't personally looked into that, but I can certainly investigate.
Yeah, would you please, it'd be interesting to see, because it's all over such a big, big program, and they're really finding so much about our history, and I'd like to know if they would do that here to find out about our history. Do we have dinosaurs out there? I know we have dinosaurs, a lot of dinosaurs running around, but I'm wondering about those.
Yeah, I'll certainly look into it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Richard, thank you. Was that, was that a crack? Anybody get that? Thank you, Richard, for bringing them here.
Thank you, Charlie.
Peter, wonderful. Appreciate it very much.
Just, just a short comment as far as thanking you for all the work you do. It is really quite remarkable, and if you ever run short on crickets, you're always welcome to come to my house.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter. Delightful. It was wonderful. Very good. We're moving along with our agenda. Next is the non-agenda, allergies again still, so forgive me, non-agenda public comments, and I'm going to turn this over to the city clerk, Christie, who will handle this.
Thank you, Mayor. So anyone who is participating remotely, if you want to indicate that you want to speak during non-agenda public comments, please press raise hand on Zoom or star nine on your phone, and we'll start with the speaker cards. Debra McGary.
We're going to come up together. Thank you.
So Debra and Todd Hooks?
Yes. So I'm going to have Todd go first, please.
Oh, why don't you go first?
No, I'll go first.
You go first. Since that's what we practice.
Thank you. We practice this so much. Again, I just wanted just to say hello to Honorable Mayor Townsend and the City Council Members for the City of Ranch Mirage. You all know me under my other hat, Debra McGary from SoCalGAS, but I'm also a very proud board member of the Ranch Mirage Executive Committee, and I'm joined here with my fellow board member, Todd Hooks, which I'll let him introduce himself in just a few minutes. But I wanted to provide just a quick little update of some of the stuff that we're working on at the chamber. I am the advocacy chairperson for the committee, and the advocacy, just to kind of give you an update, the chamber is a champion for local businesses by advocating for them in business issues. This can especially be important for our smaller businesses because sometimes they just don't have the resources for a voice, and the local Chamber of Commerce provides that voice for them. The advocacy committee works closely with the California Chamber of Commerce to oppose job-killing bills, also supporting those bills that are pro-business. Every year, California Chamber releases a list of job killer bills, just so you have an idea of what those, that definition is, of job killer bills to identify legislation that will decimate the economy or job growth in California. The chamber tracks the bills throughout the rest of the legislative session and works with educating the legislators on the serious consequences of these bills and what they will have on the state and local business. Ranch Mirage Chamber will review these bills and will look to join various coalitions to help our local business community. In addition, we are also planning for a legislative update luncheon sometime within the next year, but we do work very closely with staff, letting them know what it is that we're working with, but I think it's a great way for us to be able to help to support our local businesses. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my fellow colleague, Mr. Todd Hooks.
Thank you, Debra. It's wonderful to be here, seeing so many familiar faces. Stephen, I haven't seen you in a while. Good to see you. I'm Todd Hooks. I'm with the Awakayente Band of Queeia Indians and also on the Board of Directors of the Ranch Mirage Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to do some updates of events. We continue to work hard to support and serve the business community. The member services events, including ribbon cuttings, lunches, and mixers, have been successful in keeping the valley business professionals connected where they need it most, here in the city. Taste of Summer Ranch Mirage is on track and will be ahead in July and August, so look to see you there. Bring your appetite. Back to Business Expo takes place this fall. We're going back there, and our shop local guide is mailed, as you may know, to 17,000 mailboxes, which is a big support and very much appreciated by our business community and our community. Good things to look forward to. So we appreciate your support of Ranch Mirage businesses and the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, and not that I'm prejudiced at all out there in the audience to our chamber, but it's the best chamber in the Coachella Valley, and we are all so proud of all of you. Take care.
Next speaker, oh, sorry. Next speaker is Denise Welch.
Good day to all of you. My name is Denise Welch, and I am the chair of a newly-founded national nonprofit called Helping You Heal Gardens. Our mission is to facilitate the creation of public community healing gardens throughout the United States. We feel your local public parks would be an ideal place to incorporate one of our first Helping You Heal Gardens. Over the past two and a half years, all of us have experienced big T, little T, trauma. Big T is like what you would officially classify as trauma, injury, death, people who have become very sick with COVID-19, and people we have lost from COVID-19. And then there is little T trauma, losing a job, being isolated from your loved ones, feeling trapped in fear and uncertainty for a long period of time. The pandemic has provided us with valuable data regarding the psychological effects that last two and a half years have had on our communities. We know roughly around a third of the people hospitalized during the height of the winter COVID surge will probably develop PTSD, or post-traumatic stress disorder, which works out to about 40,000 people or so. We also know that at least 1 million Americans have died from COVID-19, according to Johns Hopkins University. Each of those deaths, on average, leaves nine bereaved close relatives of parents, children, siblings, spouses, and grandparents. In general, about 10% of bereaved people develop prolonged grief disorder, which means their grief is intense. It's incapac- It's incapacitating. You don't get over it even after a year or more. So that means that we probably have about half a million Americans experiencing that kind of severe, prolonged, intense grief, which is the population of a relatively moderate-sized city. That's a lot of people. And here, we're only talking about those big T traumas. We're not even talking about people who are grieving friends. We're not talking about long haulers who are still experiencing symptoms. We're not talking about folks who are dealing with all the minor traumas like unemployment, isolation, and all the rest. Thus, the need has come to our communities to heal. As most communities have an insufficient amount of formal counseling and talk therapy mechanisms, Helping You Heal Gardens will begin to play a vital role. It comes out of a profound need for a local public place of reconciliation, where those who are hurting can find peace. The gardens are essential to renewing the hope and trust, which will construct a vision for their future. Helping You Heal Gardens endeavor is to create public places for reconciliation, where reflection, remembrance, and refuge are publicly available. We hope that you will hear the silent voices in your own community and take part in offering a very critical place where individuals can come and heal. We would love to know what our next step is with the city to bring a Helping You Heal Garden to reality here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Tom Swan.
Thank you. I've lived in our beautiful city since 1998. First, I'd like to announce that Ben Foster Pease is presenting the Electoral Official of the Year Award to Councilmember Iris Smutrich at our Memorial Day Awards Luncheon. It's our 16th annual luncheon, May 30th, at Nickolino's Italian Restaurant in Cathedral City. We'd love for you to attend. I got a reservation with a couple councilmembers today, and I'm very grateful. The second thing I'd like to mention is that I believe, this is about the third time I've made this presentation, but I've changed my remarks a little bit, I think we should dedicate a peace poll at the wall recognition at Rancho Mirage Community Park. You know, for most of our nation's history, our military has served in peacetime. Because we've had a strong military, no country's tried to attack us. And President Reagan called our military peacekeepers when he was in, you know, in the White House. And our peace, our NATO allies, because we have our troops in NATO countries, is preventing Russia from attacking the countries outside of Ukraine. So I think we should promote world peace. I think a peace poll at that park would be wonderful. It would promote peace and also reinforce the fact that our military has kept the peace for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Walter Melendez.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to throw a plug for the FCEVs. FCEVs stands for Fuel Cell Electric Vehicle. And I'm throwing this plug after I threw a plug last, two weeks ago concerning the rental units evolving into ownership units, which of course are called condominiums. FCEVs, a lot of people don't know what that stands for. That stands for Fuel Cell Electric Vehicle. And more precisely, hydrogen Fuel Cell Electric Vehicle. And the big concern now is that, is that hydrogen for transportation, like for cars. I've been driving an electric car for five years, and I don't ever want to go back to gas, to a gasoline car. I managed to get out of debt with my electric car. I was $20,000 in the hole. Hydrogen is what you need so you don't have to keep plugging your car into an outlet with a hydrogen tank. You can drive, or you can, you can drive up to 400 miles, and you don't have to keep plugging into your car. The big problem is that the companies are not installing hydrogen charging stations. They're concentrated in Orange, in the, the city of Orange. So I want to, I want to implore to government to get involved, to get some hydrogen fuel charging stations, especially in our area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Chrissy.
Next speaker is Patrick Lowry.
Good afternoon. Nobody wants peace more than a soldier. I come to you today in a couple of things. First, my standard statement that I will always say when I get here. I support the right of a woman to choose. I also want to congratulate those students at the local high school who walked out of class in support of a woman's right to choose, as did students who opposed it. The real bottom line is what Voltaire said. I might not agree with you, but I'll defend in my death your right to say it. Played out wonderfully by children. Wish adults could play that out as well. So bless those kids. The Ukraine, I keep pushing at you guys in Ukraine. Say something about the Ukraine. Our foundation, the Adam S. Martin Foundation, will challenge you to $5,000. Match it or put together a fund, and we'll contribute $5,000 in memory of our son. Do something for these children. 136 died last time I saw you. Now it's 202. Now imagine the amount of refugee children there are. 3.5, 3.6 million Ukrainians are fleeing the country. Think of the children that go with those parents or can't go with their parents. So again, speak up in the Ukraine. Now, the other issue is one in which I stand firm on this discussion, Mr. Hagaman, that you and I have had, at least publicly here, having to do with policing. And my disappointment in the fact that we have an $11 million budget, and it's hard to find a sheriff on the highway, almost impossible to find a motorcycle sheriff on the highway. If you read our contract, folks, it's 83 hours a day, equivalent to 15, 16 patrol officers, equivalent to two motorcycle officers. So I challenge anybody, look for them, spot them. Doesn't mean I'm anti-police. Obviously, I'm not. Certainly, Sunday, when we, when the president spoke on the passing of police who've given their lives for us, I sincerely felt that one. As I certainly speak well of Palm Springs, who put together the mural for the two officers, remember, who died probably six years ago? So we know what they give to the community, but by goodness, get them out into the community. $11 million. Cathedral City, whom we talked about, Mr. Hagaman, and I'll still challenge you on the numbers, because it's always fun to figure out what numbers are about. They spend $16 million. They're two and a half times our size. We spend the $11 million. There's a small city in the Imperial Valley, between Bali and El Centro, about our size, Imperial. You've heard of Imperial. $3.5 million. Now, there's a good reason why. I'll let you investigate. That's a cute story. It's a good story. We spend a ton of money. You're asking for more money with the development of the city. We've got to see more sheriffs on the highway. It's not a matter of being there when the crime has occurred. It's a matter of preventing the crime. Seeing police on the street works. Okay? I'm going to see if I have any other great message for you guys. All right, let's support children. Let's do something good.
Wrap it up.
Okay, thank you so much, eh?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Make a fund. I'll contribute $5,000 toward it.
Thank you.
Brad Anderson.
Good afternoon, Brad Anderson. I live in the City of Rancho Mirage, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My neighbors, the police are there every other day. So just live on my street, and you'll be safe. Anyway, that's kind of a comical release, but I'm glad I saw the presentation earlier. The Mountain Conservatory, I forget the correct terminology, but C-Vague, all those meetings, I, hopefully, people, more people in the Valley will be involved in those because you'll learn a lot. And in theory, all this sounds excellent. It sounds really reasonable. But when you get involved, or if you know the facts, your mind may change a bit of how, of how these operations and special interests gets involved and kind of mucks up the good intentions of these organizations, including the Big Horn Sheep Institute, I guess you call it. But anyway, but again, C-Vague, not again, but C-Vague, I've been participating more or less three or four years in that, throughout the past three or four years, I think it was. But they have really limited public participation in those meetings, and that's a shame because there wasn't that many people that participated. So that's something to look at, and we'll talk about that later with AB361 on item one of the calendar today. I guess that's it. Oh, administrative citation issue. I've been kind of going after that for a while because it's really overused, misused by this city and every city in the Coachella Valley, and probably throughout California if you get down to it. So I'm in the book. Please look me up. There's some lawsuits going around through Desert Hot Springs and Cathedral City, and we're going to get involved in that. And I'm collecting data because hopefully, hopefully, we can kind of fight back against this overbearing, over heavy-handedness of city government to punish people that, for whatever reasons. That's how I look at it. Because I had an 80-year-old woman across the street, somebody had a flat tire in front of her house, and they gave the house the ticket. And I mean, just because, to show, like I said, heavy-handed approach to enforcing city codes. And I just want to emphasize, too, my last 30 seconds. Hopefully, we have a lesson in November. We have three positions coming open on the city council. I'm hoping that the three council members do not apply to run or hold their seat, and maybe, maybe we can get a new, new base of people in, whoever those may be, because we have an entrenched government fissure right now with this city. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Chris?
Okay, that was the last speaker card. Again, anyone participating remotely, if you would like to speak, push star nine on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. Before we go to that audience, is there anyone else in the audience here that did not submit a speaker card that wishes to speak? Okay. And remotely, the first speaker is Dorian Whitney.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hello. Thank you for hearing my comments this afternoon. My name is Dorian Whitney, and I have lived in Coachella Valley since I was seven years old. I'm here to ask that you please be more environmentally friendly, because so far, the decisions the city has made have not been. The engineers of the city are building it very spread apart, building it to suit the auto industry, and at the same time, not building enough crosswalks between the streets, making us walk very far to cross. At many intersections, the crosswalk is only halfway built, making you cross to the other side, cross back to get to your destination. This makes people just jaywalk instead of wasting that time. We have it built like this even right outside on thinks enough.
Are you still there?
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can now. Go ahead.
Oh, did I cut off a little? I'm sorry.
Yes, you did.
But so Christopher Vilios was killed there by a driver, and it shows that we are not caring enough about the safety of pedestrians. Please complete all intersections crosswalks where there is one missing on the other half, and add more lit mid-crosswalks all over the city. I hope to see the one right outside fixed soon. The fact that our city is so spread out is not helpful for anybody. We need more apartment buildings, affordable housing, and a walkable city with careful drivers and good public transit. Many times, we are stranded in extreme weather and no good public transit. We need to get people out of their gas cars, and the switch to electric vehicles is not the answer, because there will still be deadly vehicles on our roads that kill, and even more that these are silent. So this is what I'm asking for, is to just make that 180 switch from prioritizing vehicle movement into a pedestrian-friendly city, building closer, and declare some empty areas as conservation, because nobody wants to live by the freeway where it's super windy anyway. So eco-friendly building and engineering, crosswalks, affordable housing, and public transportation, all these tie in together. So it's just one overall thing that I'm asking. Please and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That was the last speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to defer to Councilmember Iris Smutrich.
Okay, it's, okay. How about that? All right. I wanted to pass on three very important words, because we're going to be hearing them for a while, and hopefully, people will take heed and want to participate. The three words are "don't shop, adopt." We have an abundance, in fact, we're overloaded now at some of the animal adoption places and pet centers with pets that need to be adopted. We have someone, I hope, okay, she is here, someone, Jackie Schrat from Riverside County Department of Animal Services, and she is here to showcase an adoptable pet. So Jackie, will you come on up? And we'd love to see what you've brought and let us know what, some of the beautiful creatures that are available.
Well, we have, I appreciate everybody letting us come today. These are some of our most vulnerable animals that we have to shelter.
Okay, Jackie, can you come over to this microphone, please, so we can all see you and hear you clearly? Oh, aren't those adorable?
They've been very quiet, so I was waiting for our turn. They've been very good.
I wasn't sure if you were here.
So what we're having a problem with this time of year especially is kittens. So we're having moms and babies and kittens that are coming in orphaned, so we are really in need of foster families, too. So not only is adoption a great option, but we also are nonstop need for somebody to care for little babies like this. They just need help for a couple of weeks, and then once they're old enough, we can place them up for adoption. So for a lot of people, I think a lot of residents are concerned about long-term care if they already have pets, but this would be a great option to help us with fostering. We provide the food, we provide medical care, everything they need. They just need a new couch for a couple of weeks so they don't have to live in the shelter till they're ready to be adopted.
Okay, so you're talking about the foster homes. Okay.
And we do have a lot of dogs and cats, adults, that are ready to be adopted. The problem in the valley that we're seeing right now is large breed dogs. So the shelter primarily is full. I've been with the county for 16 years, so the shelter's right now is full with Huskies and German Shepherd mixed dogs. So we have been pleading, Councilman Downs visited us recently at the shelter, and he saw right away that it's Huskies and Shepherds. So we're working hard with the ASPCA and some of the other groups, trying to find folks that can do transport to help us move some of these large dogs to other regions that might be able to house them better. Our valley is not the best place for Alaskan sled dogs, so it's really hard for us to imagine why we have hundreds of Huskies in Coachella Valley. So it's a kind of an interesting phenomenon, you know?
You guys are doing good. You're okay. Don't be scared. Don't be scared.
They certainly are sweet. And we have a video that we'd like to show.
Yeah.
That, you don't have to leave. You can stay up here if you want, but why don't?
our biggest issues as well. Hi, my name is Dr. Kim Youngberg. I'm the Deputy Director for Riverside County Department of Animal Services. Lately, we've been experiencing animals coming in in the numbers of over 100 per day. It's happening because people don't have their pets microchipped so that we can return them back to them when they're lost. Also, have your pets spayed or neutered. What we really need is for people to come out and adopt animals. The consequences of animals not getting adopted, they can become sick, their behavior can deteriorate, and they can get, they get stressed out. And then sometimes, unfortunately, the endpoint is euthanasia. It's a lot of work. Our staff are doing everything that they can to work diligently to try and save animals' So the city of Rancho Mirage offers a program to help promote adoption of pets from the shelter. It's amazing that they're a city that does that for their constituents, where they will help to reimburse them for the fees for adoption. And we wish more cities would jump on board and do the same thing.
Thank you so much. And a big thank you to Kai also for making that video. One of the most important things that I've heard about, and I don't know how true it is, that so many people, when they were isolated with COVID restrictions and were homebound, a lot of them adopted pets. And I know that pets were coming in from all over, and that might be the reason why so many Huskies and animals that you don't normally think of as being in the desert might suddenly be here. A number of these people have gone back to work onsite and are not able to be home with their pets all the time and are not able to care for their pets the way they did when they were home. So a lot of these animals, from what I understand, have been turned into the adoption agencies. A lot of these people would love to keep their pets, but because they're not home a lot, they're seeing, you know, pets suffering from separation anxiety. And I know a lot of people have talked about that. It is heartbreaking, and it's heartbreaking to hear that these sweet animals might be euthanized because it's really not something we even want to think about, much less see. But when you've got so many that are up for adoption, you know, if you're thinking of adopting someone and you're concerned, you know, think of the other side where you're putting so much more love in your life and maybe more love in your family's life that they need at this time, especially if you have lost members of your family or friends. Nothing is more rewarding or comforting than a sweet little pet by your side. So when you mentioned about Rancho Mirage being involved, and I know that, you know, aside from calling Rancho Mirage, you can call the Coachella Valley Animal Campus at 760-343-3644. So the city's animal adoption and pet care incentive program allows Rancho Mirage residents to be reimbursed for adoption costs and pet care services. The animal adoption incentive program will reimburse up to $100 for adoption fees when residents adopt a pet from any municipal or county shelter or nonprofit rescue organization. The pet care incentive program will reimburse residents up to $200 for pet care services when an animal is adopted from any municipal or county shelter or nonprofit rescue organization. So in addition to pet adoption programs, current Rancho Mirage pet owners will be reimbursed for spaying or neutering up to $85 for dogs and up to $60 for cats, as well as microchipping fees for up to $25. So claim your reimbursement by just coming to City Hall and completing a reimbursement request form and bring along your pet adoption or pet care services documentation and receipts. Reimbursement is limited to one reimbursement per Rancho Mirage household, and you can call Rancho Mirage City Hall at 760-324-4511, or visit the ranchomirageca.gov. Our local shelters, as you can hear and see, are currently full of pets that desperately need homes. So if you're able, please, please consider adopting a pet. It will surely change their lives and certainly change your life, and you'll put a whole lot of love in your home for your family, yourself, and for the pet that you can bring into your home. Thank you so much, and thank you, Jackie, so much.
Thank you both.
And now I'd like to also, you may be, I don't want to keep you up here too long.
Time for a bottle.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for bringing your sweet, sweethearts. Anyway, now I'd like to go over to Steve Downs, and he is the expert on some of the pet adoption facilities.
Thank you, Iris. Thank you for asking me to participate in this today. I appreciate it very much for a couple of reasons. One reason is that one of my duties now is to serve on the Animal Campus Commission. And also, I fill Dana Hobart's seat on this council, and the Animal Campus and care for our animals was near and dear to his heart. And so it's important for me to speak to this today. So a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was about three weeks ago, Jackie, I was out at the Animal Campus. And Jackie, was you one, one of your staff members who took me on a tour?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Thank you so much. I really appreciated that. One of the things that I noticed was the population of dogs, and Jackie told me that the current population of dogs at the Animal Campus is about 200 or so, something like that. And I asked her what the normal population was, and normally about 100 dogs in the Animal Campus at any given time. And so it's critically important for us to talk to this issue today about adoption of animals. So anyone who is capable of doing it, please think about doing it. And as Iris talked about, there are city compensation amounts available to you for adopting animals. So Jackie, thank you so much for being here today. By the way, I think I heard a couple of your kittens trying to speak at the microphone while you were up there earlier, so. Thank you, Jackie. We really appreciate that you were here today. And again, if you're thinking about adopting an animal, please contact the, please get in touch with the Animal Campus. Thanks very much. Thank you, Iris, and thank you for thinking about this today.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Jackie, and we thank all of your staff, and you're doing noble work, and I know you're dedicated to, to making sure that these fine little creatures find good homes. So we're with you. Thank you. Come back anytime.
Thank you, Iris. Thank you, Steve. Ted?
Thank you, Mayor. On, on Friday, June 10th, the city of Rancho Mirage invites all Rancho Mirage residents to an evening at Palm Springs Power Baseball. This is an incredible evening, one that, as I've talked about before, is a throwback to Americana. The admission into the game is free for Rancho Mirage residents with a proof of residency and their families, up to four children per adult. I guess that means if you have eight kids and you're husband and wife, you're in. Proof of residency can be a driver's license, an ID, card, utility bill, et cetera. Attendees will receive a complimentary hot dog, a bag of chips, soda or water, and a special gift while supplies last. The game begins at 7:05, and the gates open at 6 o'clock. Palm Springs Stadium is located at 1901 East Aristo Road in Palm Springs. For more exciting Palm Springs Power news, visit their website at palmspringspowerbaseball.com. We hope you all come out to enjoy a day of all-American fun. In the valley here, we have a number of nonprofit organizations. And one that I will mention now, you can remove this picture, is the Desert Ark Nonprofit Human Services Organization, serving people with developmental and intellectual disabilities, including conditions such as autism, cerebral palsy, Down Syndrome, epilepsy, and many others. They have approximately 700 people enrolled in their programs, designed to help secure employment, provide a safe place to come daily, and to interact with each other. Desert Ark is dedicated to social innovation and offers a variety of business services, including shredding, recycling, landscape maintenance, janitorial, as well as fulfillment and assembly. The city of Rancho Mirage currently uses Desert Ark for mobile shredding, e-waste, landscape maintenance services at city-owned properties, which, and it also includes a property at the post office. The Special Assistance Fund here in our city has made a contribution of $5,000 to Desert Ark. You can take that picture off for a moment. I will say this, that I have the opportunity, off times, to go to Gelson's Market in Rancho Mirage, where they employ several people from Desert Ark regularly that are so helpful, and it just is a joy to see them function. And I've mentioned in my own family, we have had a relative with cerebral palsy who was born with it. There was an unknown disease, and that was the beginning and the formation of the charity. So it's near and dear to my heart. Desert Ark does a wonderful job, and I congratulate them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Well done. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The city of Rancho Mirage is proud to continue partnering with the Livestream Blood Bank to host blood drives throughout the year at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory. We would hope that you would support our community and join in these special events. Upcoming blood drives at Rancho Mirage Library are on Wednesday, June 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Friday, July 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Friday, August 9th, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you'd like to donate, be sure you drink plenty of fluids and bring a photo ID with your proof of age. Donors under the age of 17 must bring a signed Livestream parental consent form. Now I'd like to show you a brief video that the staff put prepared.
We're at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, and we're having the mobile blood drive. It's something you know will help somebody. Hi, I'm Lauren. I'm here today giving blood. I work here at the library, and it's nice and convenient to have the blood drive here in our community room.
We keep the tubes in one cooler.
This is important to me because I've had family members that have had to receive blood before. It only takes about an hour or less, and it's an easy way to help those people out.
Okay, this is going to be tied for just a few seconds. My name is Alberto Rendón Santiago. I am a site supervisor for Livestream Blood. We do blood drives here often, maybe every two months. Just leave your arm right where it is. It's a great location, right in the middle of the valley where we can get a lot of donors. It's a totally safe process. All the equipment and supplies we use are one-time used. Everything is sterile. Rancho Mirage benefits from this, just to show that they have a population of residents that care.
It's something that I can do. I cannot give a great amount of money, so I give blood.
The need for blood is always there. Every two seconds, someone in the United States will need blood. Less than 5% of the population that's eligible to donate actually does so. One in seven hospitalized patients needs blood. So we'll be back in another two months.
I'm just going to mark your veins with my pen.
Okay. So anyone who donates today should be eligible to donate when we return in the following two months. And maybe we can get some other people who weren't able to make it today.
To learn more about all of the events scheduled this year and to sign up in advance, you can go through livestream.org or call livestream at 800-879-4484. And thank you for all your support in the past and look forward to even a better year this coming year. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate that. I will go next, last but never least. I would like to talk to you about a wonderful new program at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, and all you need to participate is a library card and a little curiosity. Thanks to a generous grant from the Smabby Family Foundation, the Rancho Mirage Library joins over 400 other libraries across the U.S. that lend portable, user-friendly telescopes to patrons. The library is also allocating a percentage of the telescopes to educators to check out and share with their students. The library plans to have 30 telescopes in their collection. The telescopes are treated like other library materials. Check it out, just like a library book. For more information about this program and how to check out a telescope at the Rancho Mirage Library, please visit ranchomirajlibrary.org or call 760-341-7323. That's 760-341-7323, and they will give you all the information you need on this wonderful program. And we do have a video that'll take a little bit more into what it's all about. Please run it.
When I'm stargazing, I am awestruck at all the beautiful things out there, specifically the rings of Saturn. That's what got me hooked when my grandpa first showed me when I was 12. Hi, I'm Lauren Zuckerberg. I'm the Observatory Program Coordinator at the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory. We're launching our library telescope program where patrons can check out lightweight portable telescope and check it out just like a book. All you need is a library card. You have to be 18 years or older, or if you're younger than that, you need to have a parent or guardian present. This is our Orion Starblast 4 1/2-inch Astro Reflector Tabletop Telescope. So with these telescopes, you'll be able to see really cool features like craters on the moon, Venus as a crescent, or the rings of Saturn even. These telescopes were sponsored by the Smabby Family Foundation, which was able to help us launch the program. This is important to the community because it gives people a chance to look through a telescope themselves. So if they haven't been able to get to one of our stargazings, they can bring a little piece of the universe home with them. So to find out more about this program, you can go to our website, ranchomirajlibrary.org, and you'll learn all about this telescope and find some frequently asked questions.
Well, thank you very much, and I just wanted to say that these are not toys. This is the real deal, people. And the program, when it started, the ones that we had went out the door instantly. So there is a waiting list, and again, I suggest you check the website or call over there to the library, and they'd be more than happy to explain it to you. So...
dot org, and you'll learn all about this telescope and find some frequently asked questions.
Well, thank you very much. And I just wanted to say that these are not toys. This is the real deal, people. And the program, when it started, the ones that we had went out the door instantly. So there is a waiting list, and again, I suggest you check the website or call over there to the library, and they'd be more than happy to explain it to you. So that is the end of our council comments. Now I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only item I have for today is, unless there's an objection from a council member, staff would like to pull Agenda Item Number 9, which is the contract with Fine Food Bank. Staff was alerted yesterday that the Riverside County Environmental Health Department may be performing some conflicting services, so staff needs to evaluate that information and bring this back at a later date.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any objections to pulling Number 9?
Does anybody need a motion?
No? Okay, well, we'll just move on then. And I'll turn this over to the consent calendar to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you have six items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to adopt Joint Resolution Number 2022, next in order, making findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, as amended by Assembly Bill 361, and authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the City Council and affiliated agencies and all other city-affiliated Brown Act bodies in accordance with AB 361 during the current state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Item number two is to approve the California Choice Energy Authority entering into a long-term resource adequacy agreement with the Santa Paula Energy Storage LLC on behalf of the Rancho Mirage Energy Authority. Item number three is to approve the May 5th, 2022, regular city council meeting minutes. Item number four is the award of one special assistance fund in the amount of $5,000 to unqualified nonprofit. Item number five are contracts. Item number six are demands, and staff is here for any questions before we move to the council. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the consent calendar items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. And Kristi, will you take it from here?
Yes, first speaker is Brad Anderson.
Thank you for speaking about the animals today. That's very important. But I wanted to speak on Consent Item Number 1. This is concerning the allowing city boards and commissions and councils to have the appointees or the council members not attend in-person meetings and do it from the privacy of their homes. This emergency has passed, my opinion, and this cut out, I guess, to allow remote meetings. The public, you can always do that, to allow the council appointee not to do it in person. All they have to do is post the agenda and be accessible to the public wherever the location is. And most people will do that at the homes, which is understandable. But I just, I'm a firm believer that this law, AB 361, is being abused throughout California, and it's being abused by this city if you continue to have this enacted. Because, well, I feel that if people are out and about, they're doing other activities, and they're not doing their civic duty or whatever they committed to do, then we have an issue there. So I have a small video. No, I'm kidding. I don't have any video. I'm sorry. But I'm opposed to this. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who did not submit a speaker card who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, and there is also no one on Zoom.
Thank you, Kristi. With that, I will go to City Council comments. Anybody have any comments? All right.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Let me call it first. We will call for a motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
So moved.
Second. Thank you very much. Please vote.
Question, question, Mayor.
Yes.
I noticed that the minutes are now included in the consent calendars. There's some reason for that.
I noticed that too, and I think we'll have an answer, won't we?
Yeah, just to streamline the agenda. One less vote you have to take.
That was it.
I see. Okay.
Appreciate it. All right, everybody, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Moving on, next is the action calendar. And I'm going to turn this over to city clerk to present the staff report and handle public comments also.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So annually, the city seeks volunteers to serve on its boards and commissions. Beginning in mid-March, my office issued a notice inviting applications for the one-year term beginning June 1st. The notice was published twice in the Desert Sun newspaper and included in several city e-blasts. It was also posted at City Hall, at the library, and on the city's website. Applications received are on file in my office. Copies of all applications were promptly provided to the City Council for review and consideration. Each council member provided me with their nominations, which shall be confirmed by a majority vote of the council. In a moment, I will read all of the nominations for all 12 boards and commissions. You may make one motion to confirm the entire slate of appointments. Any nomination requiring further consideration may be pulled from the slate for separate action. And are there any questions before I read the nominations?
I have none. Anybody else have any comments? All right, proceed.
Okay. So for Architectural Review Board nominees are John Mylander, Sean Lockyer, John Greenwood, Tom Dosey, Lance O'Donnell, Alan Sanborn, Narendra Patel, Paul Sterwald. Community Cultural Commission nominees are Kayla Pressman, Michael O'Keefe, Sally Trademan, Donna Malouf, Frank Farino. Community Emergency Preparedness Commission nominees are Robert Brown, Mary Levine, Kirk Dandridge, David Richardson, Mary Lou Suter, Technical Advisor Katie Stice, and Technical Advisor Ed Thomas. Community Parks and Trails Commission nominees are Celeste Visite, Dennis Constant, Eddie McLaughlin, Eric Wright, and Fred Struk. Historic Preservation Commission nominees are Carol Leibowitz, Frank Lopez, Christian Braun, Craig Traupain, Ray Keller. Housing Commission nominees are Barbara Barrett, Rob Bergstein, Scott Newton, Darrell Mulvahill, Mary Bundy, and Velma Coombs. Library and Observatory Advisory Commission nominees are Ron Treat, Frank Brightwell, Don Summa, Lois Reese, Steve Eizer, and Technical Advisor Patrick Lambright. Library and Observatory Foundation Board nominees are Allison Stolciak, Lucy Tagmire, Christine Hughes, Leslie Usso, Patrice Merritt, Robert Moon, James Soa, Claudette Pace, and Mayor Townsend also serves on this commission. Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission nominees are Marlene Marie Cassetta, Mike Renner, Gary Jones, Diane Lynn, Stan Markowitz. Planning Commission nominees are Murray Bryant, David Gray, Bill Maxwell, Pamela Chanter, and Jason Agostini. Speaker Series Commission nominees are Charles Barrett, Lynn Molatto, Candy Glickman, Robert Berg, and Mary Willis. And Traffic Safety Commission nominees are Sidney Burks, Michael Ziskind, Stephen Shuey, Dell Smith, Sheriff Sergeant Don Olson, and Citizens on Patrol Services Captain Alfonso Carpenter. So that completes the list of nominations, and any vacancies remaining will be considered at a future meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any council comments on the list as read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
After reviewing all the new people we have joining us this year, we really have a lot of very qualified people. And fortunately, this is one of the best number of individuals that we've seen in a long time. So I wholeheartedly support the current recommendations.
Well, Richard, I concur, and I want to thank also for giving your time to make sure that the city of Rancho Mirage stays to the excellence that it is at, all with your help. So I appreciate that. So now with that, I will call for a motion.
I'll be happy to make that motion, Mayor, that the city council ratify the nominations of members to serve on the city's various boards slash commissions for the one-year term beginning June 1, 2022, and waive any applicable term limits.
I'll second that.
Very good. Before we vote on this, are there any people in the audience who would like to comment or make a comment on this?
So we'll open up the public comment period. Kristi, do you want to handle that?
I will. So I did not receive any speaker cards on this. If you're participating remotely and would like to speak, please press raise hand on Zoom or star nine on your phone. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing no one, and there is no one on Zoom either.
Very good. And with that, can we do our vote?
Yep. There's been a motion and a second to approve the slate, so please vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good.
Mayor, I want to congratulate all of the, all of the new commissioners for their dedication and their time, volunteering their services. That is a critical part of our, the fabric of our city. It's the volunteers that make so much of a difference, and I want to thank you in advance and congratulate you on your appointment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Appreciate that. All right, then we are going to move on to, let me see, Number 9? Number 8. And we're going to turn this over to Jessica Holman, Senior Management Analyst, to present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The topic of the Salt and Sea is before the council again today. The city council has considered, in the context of an open and public study session that brought together many groups, including state, county, local government, and community groups in April of 2019, the potential of importing saltwater as a feasible component for remedying and/or abating the rate of decline of the Salt and Sea, and declared its support of a comprehensive analysis and review of all water import alternatives, including saltwater, as a long-term solution for the Salt and Sea by a resolution in 2019, 2019-42, and declared its continuing support by resolution 2020-39 on November 5th of 2020. The California State Water Resources Control Board has an oversight role in monitoring and ensuring progress towards the goals developed in the 10-year Salt and Sea Management Plan, and has set a deadline of December 31st of 2022 for a completion of a long-term plan regarding the Salt and Sea. In December of 2017, the state released a request for information in which 11 proposals were received and included, that included a water importation component. Following the establishment of an independent review panel, an updated RFI was issued in August of 2021 to allow respondents to provide updates to their responses and to solicit additional responses. In total, 18 responses were received, including updates to the original 11 and seven new responses. In April of 2022, these responses were reviewed by the panel with the assistance of a research and analysis support team. The support team included professors and graduate researchers from UC Santa Cruz, Kennedy Jinx Consulting Engineers and Scientists, as well as other specialty contractors. Of the 18 responses, five were deemed to not conform to the RFI and will not be considered further. Of the 13 that conformed, these will be brought into a feasibility analysis. This analysis will consist of a fatal flaw, followed by a detailed analysis of technical and economic feasibility of these responses. The feasibility report is expected to be released this summer, followed by the summary report in late summer of 2022. A recent report by Jenny R. Ross of the Stout Research Center entitled "Potential Major Greenhouse Gas Emissions from Proposed Salt and Sea Long Range Plans" warns that many of the currently proposed long-range plans will cause large emissions of greenhouse gases in the form of carbon dioxide and methane. This has caused alarm and prompts a desire that all proposals have greenhouse gas emissions considered during the feasibility study. Presented to council today is a resolution declaring the city's continued support for the comprehensive analysis of all water import alternatives, and requests that potential carbon emissions be considered during the analysis as part of the long-term solution for the restoration of the Salt and Sea. That concludes my presentations, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk, Kristi.
I do, wait, I'm sorry. Yes, this one, I do have speaker cards. So if anyone is participating via Zoom and wishes to speak on this item, please press raise hand or star nine on your phone. And our first speaker is Feliz Nunez.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council members and staff. We know that California is in a very serious drought, and we really appreciate the fact that in the past you have supported us on the concept of importing water. And just to let you know that the west side of Coachella, when you do this, you're helping the east side of Coachella that has very poor quality water, very poor air quality too, and they're, they're suffering from health issues. The Border Patrol has cancer clusters amongst them, and some of them have died. We have, right now, very popular the concept of mining lithium. To mine lithium, we need tons of water. If these people can't even have poor quality water that they can drink or bathe in, that water that's on reserve is going to be used for lithium. So this is why it's so important to get water imported and where, you know, to use these proposals that we have in line to, to make potable water, to desalinate and to, to use the water in all our daily lives. Water is life. You've heard about that before. But our politicians and state officials seem to favor the fact that they would allow the Salt and Sea to dry. And the Imperial Irrigation District is very powerful, and they donate a lot of money, and they, they also donate to politicians. Manuel Perez, Eduardo Garcia, Raúl Ruiz, the Salt and Sea Management Plan, the Salt and Sea Authority, Region 7 Water Board, Coachella Valley Water District, they are all aware of the health problems, but they're very excited about lithium. And, and it is good to have lithium, but I think that we need water really bad. So I really appreciate the fact that you have supported us in the, in the past and know that you're doing a great favor to these people who are in great need in the east. Most of them are elderly Anglo people. We have Filipino, we have black, the majority of them are Mexican, and then we have the Purépecha tribe, which are the undocumented immigrant workers that put food on our table. So you would be helping all of these people. They can't move, they're, they're pretty, they're not as affluent. So you would be doing the whole of Coachella Valley a great favor. Property values would go up, people could make a living, business would go up, tourists would be attracted if we have water we need it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Chuck Parker.
I can come up and speak as long as I can get out of the chair, so, thank you. I want to thank the city for spending staff time and resources to prepare this report and this resolution. I think it shows that the city cares about the health of the environment outside the confines of the city itself, and I think that this gives us an opportunity. If you're like me, a lot of times, things like problems like climate change or the drought, you, you wonder, what can I do about it? And I think by, by endorsing this resolution, we would all be taking action to help reduce global warming by reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And also, by bringing water to the Salt and Sea, we would have the opportunity then to desalinate. It's been shown by experts that it can be done on a large scale. The salt can be processed and made a commercial grade, and so that's a source of funding to finance the project. And, and for the same cost or less, we could restore the Salt and Sea to a beautiful, healthy environment instead of a terrible environmental disaster. So I just want to thank you for your support. The planning process is coming to an end. I think the staff report was clear about that, so we thought it would be important to, to circulate this petition or this resolution again this year to make sure that we get the best result possible and not a hasty, hasty solution that won't be a solution. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Tom Swan.
Thank you. Reiterates, we strongly support this resolution. We've supported it in the past. I want you to know that our military is very concerned about climate change because with climate change, as resources dwindle, there may be future battles and wars over a resource like water. We support this, and we need to take care of the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan St. Louis.
Good afternoon. I came and spoke to you, I think, about a month ago, asking you to consider this resolution, and I was so concerned with making sure I didn't forget something, that I sped through it, and I wasn't really talking from the heart. But now I want to talk from the heart. And this is a critical issue. We all have family, we all care about the future of the world. We need to address climate change, and California is going to put $37 billion into trying to address climate change. And the Salt and Sea is going to be a huge problem if we don't do it right. We are asking you again to support this resolution because it's so important that they are forced, those that are going to make the decision, are forced to consider methane and carbon emissions, because we don't want what happened to Owens Valley to happen to us. And that's been an ongoing problem that has cost huge amounts of money, and it's not solved. It's still creating emissions. And so the Salt and Sea can act as a carbon sink and can actually improve conditions here in the valley, or it can become the source of future great problems. And I'm asking you, please, support the resolution that they must consider emissions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? And there is no one on Zoom either.
All right. We are, we are in the discussion.
So now we can take any council comments on this item?
So we will now take council comments on this item. Thank you. None? Anybody?
Question for you, Mayor. Jessica, what is the primary difference between what we're being asked to vote on today as opposed to what we did previously, having to do with ocean seawater and the access to the sea?
So initially, before in the last two resolutions, you were declaring support for the analysis of water import. Now specifically, they have those responses in, and you're asking for them during the feasibility analysis, that they considered greenhouse gas emissions and potential emissions in their analysis. So it's a specific ask from that review panel.
All right. With that, we will make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, you may.
So I think every one of us in the Coachella Valley is well aware that we need to do something about evaporation of the Salt and Sea, and we need to stop the continuation of the exposure of the toxic lake bed. So thank you to those of you who encouraged us on this matter. Chuck, your emails were, did not, were read, and I suspect that probably you'll be happy with the result today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Anybody else? All right. Iris?
Just one comment, because I want to commend you for your stamina, for hanging in there to make some of these moves forward in the positive direction, because when I got on the council almost 11 years ago, I was told that there were already 23 studies that had been conducted. And I'm sure you've faced a lot of frustration, and you have hung in there miraculously, and I want to thank you for all your efforts. Your noble, your work has been very noble and much appreciated.
Very good. Thank you. Everybody had their say. So with that, I will call for a motion on item number eight on the action calendar.
All right, Mayor, I'll make the motion, and congratulations to you all, that the city council adopt resolution number 2022, next in order, declaring the continued support for the comprehensive analysis of all water import alternatives, and a request that the independent review, that the, excuse me, that the independent review panel have potential carbon emissions considered during the comprehensive feasibility analysis, and part of the long-term solution for the restoration of the Salt and Sea.
Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Very good. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Let's hope, congratulations. Let's hope it does some good, and the people hear and listen.
Agreed, Ted, and would that we could do more than just pass resolutions.
Very good. Thank you all. All right, moving along, we're going to item number 10, which I will turn over to Justin Ruberg. And he is going to be discussing the fleet manager to present the staff report, and here he goes.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you today is the intent to initiate levy proceedings for fiscal year 22-23 landscaping, lighting, maintenance districts. The city has five special benefit zones born from development agreements between the property developer and the city, and one citywide median zone under landscape and lighting district 87-01. The district exists for the purpose of maintaining landscape and lighting in each specific zone. The zones within the district are assessed on a cost-recovery basis, assessing parcel owners for the associated maintenance costs of the specific zone. The citywide landscape and lighting zone, which covers the city medians, is assessed on parcel owners citywide. The five special benefit zones are assessed only to the parcels receiving the district and special benefit. The engineer's annual levy report factors the revenues and expenses associated with each zone, and provides a cost-recovery estimate for each zone, and is included in the presentation packet. The recommendation is that the attached engineer's report are based on cost recovery. Today's action does not constitute a final approval. They simply initiate the levy proceedings. A final approval is scheduled for the June 2 city council meeting. A public notice will be issued in the local paper noticing June 2 as the meeting. A public hearing will be conducted during that meeting, allowing residents the opportunity to speak on the proposed assessments. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the attached resolutions that declare the city's intent to levy, and sets the public hearing date for June 2, 2022. This concludes my presentation. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Now I will call for, and turn this over for public comments.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards on this. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? And going to the remote audience, if you'd like to speak, push Star 9 on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. One way to few moments.
See none?
And no speakers.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to council comments.
Let me just say this. Justin normally does not wear a coat and tie. Justin is out there working in the field, and good presentation. I think you would have done that without the coat and tie on, but we appreciate it. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
Very good. Any more comments?
No, considering the amount of work that was done in putting this document together.
I see that.
I think we owe more than just a thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very, very much. How's that? Good. Okay, with that, I will call for a motion.
And I'll make the motion. Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt, A, Resolution Number 2022, next in order, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Rancho Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, number 87-01, for fiscal year 2022/23; and B, Resolution Number 2022, next in order, declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Rancho Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, number 87-01, for fiscal year 2022/23; and C, Resolution Number 2022, next in order, for preliminary approval of the engineer's annual levy report for the Rancho Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District, number 87-01, for fiscal year 2022/23.
Very good. Is there a second, please? We have, what did you hear, Chris, for the second?
I heard Mayor Protim Kite first.
Very good. We'll go with that. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Thank you. That part of the calendar. Oh, we have an 11 on here, huh? Pardon me, we do have one more, number 11, and it is going to be turned over to, oh, Ryan, how could I do that to you? I'm so sorry. You are very important, Ryan.
Briefly, before he walks out the room, if you indulge me, Mr. Ruberg's first solo presentation, the past item, and he was extremely nervous today in his coat and tie, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
The item before you this afternoon is the annual compliance resolution required for Senate Bill 1, often referred to as our gas tax monies. This is a fairly routine item for the city council. The one addition that you might see in the resolution is staff has added an allocation for some further studies for the low-water crossing at Frank Sinatra. With that, that concludes staff's report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Very much. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Chrissy for comments.
Thank you. So if anyone participating remotely would like to speak, push Star 9 on your phone or raise hand on Zoom. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing nobody, and no one on Zoom either.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. With that, I'll turn it over for council comments. Anybody have any comments on this? I see none, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Richard.
City council adopt resolution number 2022, next in order, approving the project list to be funded by the road maintenance and rehab program in accordance with Series Bill 1, Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Downs. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And there it is. Next, we are moving on to closed session, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, when I ran into Justin on the way into City Hall, I looked at him, and I start racing through my lawyer face ID app in my brain, thinking, which player is this? I didn't realize he was Justin. So the council is going to now recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 regarding two anticipated litigation items, and they're both involving significant exposure to litigation, one of which, which I have to announce, has to do with a former resident of a former mobile home park, and the other one has to do with the, a particular code or charter issue that is no longer legal. Nobody's fault, though.
You sure?
Nobody's fault. We need our election.
That's good. That's good.
Mayor, before you go to recess, may I merely make one comment? This is our last meeting before Memorial Day, and I would like to salute all veterans. The expression "some gave some and self-gave all," "some gave all" is so critically important as a Navy veteran, and Charlie, you being the other veteran on this dais.
Thank you.
Memorial Day has a special meeting for all of us. So again, I thank everyone that has served and everybody that has made that supreme sacrifice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very well put and well timed. So with that, we are going to adjourn into closed session. Thank you very much for attending.
It's 4:05 PM, and the city council took no reportable action in closed session. This meeting is adjourned.